June 12th, 2018, work session in the Riverton City Council of Order at 7:00 PM. And we'll have Councilmember Hancock lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and after that, Councilmember Bailey will offer a prayer for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dearest heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings that we have here. Thank you for letting us help to lead the city of Riverton in all the things that we do. Please bless us with the knowledge that we need to make proper decisions for the city and the residents of the city. Thank you for all of the members of the military and law enforcement, that they will be protected as they do their job in protecting us. And we ask all of these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Would the City Clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilwoman Lance Cote.
Here.
Councilwoman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilwoman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Mayor John Baker.
I am present. The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse about half of us, Sean, Holly, and Kyle.
So moved. Second.
Holdings in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. And I declare that we do have a quorum. And the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passed. Off-street parking presentation and discussion. Eric Carr, Community Development Director, could we have your report, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. Before I begin, I'll give you a brief history of why we're talking about this. So in January or December, we had an issue come up with some parking, and the interim Community Development Director was tasked with updating our ordinance for parking. And as we went through that, we went through several iterations, as I said, on Planning Commission. And we just couldn't find something that was right. And so I started performing an immense amount of research on the matter. And our current regulations are about three pages. They dictate how many parking spaces per dwelling unit we should have, how many parking spaces per thousand square feet of floor space we should have for several different laundromat, bowling alley, automobile sales service stations. And it dictates how much parking they have to have. As I started looking at updating our parking ordinance, it became readily apparent that financially speaking and economically speaking, it made more sense to move to a parking maximum structure. This is what I've got so far, it's 16 pages. And so that was a bit lengthy to put into our ordinances. So I thought maybe instead of calling these our ordinance, we could call them guidelines, and in our ordinance reference the guidelines. That gives us two benefits. One, it dramatically reduces our cost for publishing, and also allows us to update and modify by resolution rather than three readings through council. So my presentation tonight talks about why parking maximums make much more sense, or at least removing parking minimums. Parking hurts our revenue. Why is revenue important? It's how we provide the services that are so vital to the city: clean water, sewage treatment, streets, fire protection, ambulance, air service, all of those amenities that living in a civilization provides. Let's go through an example. What I looked at was our Main Street from Second East to Seventh East. And I took all of the tax valuations for all of those properties that front Main Street, added up the square footage of all of the lots, so we could normalize the data. Main Street has a tax, then keep in mind, this is property tax only, this does not include sales tax. Main Street has a tax valuation of $4.05 per square foot, based on the county records. I did the same thing for North Federal. But I'll point out pretty quickly is that you can see a stark difference in the appearance and how much parking. Here's City Hall, here's Safeway, this was before it closed, the car wash is down here. So we went from Lincoln up to Sunset along, and all of the properties that front North Federal. Again, added up the tax valuations, and took out, just in case anybody's wondering, the exempt properties on both Main and Federal, because they didn't count. North Federal's $1.86 per square foot, property tax valuation. So we've normalized that data per square foot. Again, Main Street, 405, North Federal, $1.86. That's 118% difference. How did we get to this point? It's very tempting to think that it began with the advent of the car. If you have a car, you need parking. It didn't. Most of you have probably been to this location. This is the Eastridge Mall in Casper. It is failing. It has been failing for probably a decade now, it's dying a slow death, as most malls in America are. Why? We've developed an enormous tract of land, squeezed as many stores in as we could, and still have to maintain all of this infrastructure. Our parking problems began in Adena, Minnesota, in 1956. That was when the first mall went into place. Our addiction to parking started at that point. And you can see, Target's doing okay, it's what, a third full? This is on a Saturday morning at about 10:00. I'm a super nerd, I measured the distance of the shadow and calculated the date and the angle of the shadow. So I came up with the time. So, that aside, how did they get to those point? Let's just take, this is a normal distribution curve. Let's say someone did an experiment in their parking lot, and they measured how many cars came in from 11 to 12 for an entire year, every day. They would develop an average of 100 cars, and the standard deviation for this particular set of data is 10. So one standard deviation, which contains 68% of our data, resides between 90 and 110. Two standard deviations represents 95% of our data, so 80 to 120. Three standard deviations would be almost 100%, 99.7% of our data falls between three standard deviations. So 30, plus or minus 30 cars. Designers, then, can calculate a probability. Now, do you, all of you have your calculators?
I was not told there would be a test.
So what this equation states is probability. The area under this curve represents probability. What is the likelihood of something occurring based on our data set? So the probability of a number X falling between two different numbers equals this whole thing. And if anybody wants to know what that whole thing means, I can explain it later. But, so we evaluate this equation from the two numbers that are our boundary, and that gives us a probability. What designers of parking lots started doing in the 60s and 70s is designing for over two standard deviations worth of parking. The probability of that ever getting exceeded is very, very low. It's never going to happen. And I equate that to, let's think of our building code, how we construct the structures around us. This sort of design criteria is very similar to designing our building code for F5 tornadoes. It's never going to happen. But it could. So we're going to design everything for the worst possible case scenario. 130 people, we rarely see that in our parking lot, but we're going to design for it. It doesn't make sense. Let's pull this back to something that's more reasonable. So how do we fix it? Let's intelligently think through our parking regulations and guidelines. I'm not going to mention the city, but this particular development happened at two very different times. One side was post-modification of their parking minimums, and the other side is after the full regulation went into effect. Tax valuation, now, this is another state, so it's a very different tax structure, but, and they're, they obviously don't pay nearly as much in property tax as we do, but they have other taxes that we don't. So 23 cents a square foot for this development. And you can see, oh, I didn't count these cars, but it's about a third full. This is about 15% full. The other side of the highway, or the other side of the north-south corridor is 36 squares, or it's $36 or cents per square foot. Much better. And keep in mind, this was halfway through the transition. That's a 57% increase. I will take that every day of the week. Same town, this is the same east-west corridor, and the other one resided off to the west. But this is another stark example. The development on the right occurred under parking minimums, development on the left occurred after full implementation of their new parking regulations. I don't know what's going on in this parking lot, I think it's a Kmart, and it's closed. So, but this one was where I based my numbers on, and it was one of the first box stores, and it was way out of town, close to the interstate, which is where they all develop, and they put in a parking ocean. 5 cents per square foot tax valuation on that property. This property was developed with walkability in mind, convenience. There's a couple hotels here, there's a large retail outdoor chain here, there's a coffee shop here, there's restaurants here, 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 and here. You could literally spend an entire weekend on this site and never move your car. The parking lots are about 70 to 80% full. They're at 47 cents per square foot. That's an 840% increase in tax valuation, property tax only. That's not including the sales tax that's getting generated, the lodging tax that's getting generated with intelligent parking guidelines. So, here we are, on North Federal. We all know this building is the old Kmart, this building is Walmart. Under, oop, under our current guidelines in parking, we're at $1.15 and $1.18 per square foot tax valuation. This, again, was taken at 11:00, or no, I'm sorry, 10:00 on a Saturday morning. There's plenty of parking spaces left, but they have to have this much because of our current parking regulations, based on the square footage, the gross floor area of their structures. If we were to intelligently design our parking regulations, they would have the possibility, they wouldn't have to, but they would have the possibility, of subdividing these lots and putting in a business here and here, maybe here and here, and sharing parking. What would that do to our normalized data? As is, we're $1.15 at Kmart, developed $1.52. That's based on current construction costs and estimated based on the businesses that are existing, these two here, and then Taco Bell. Walmart would go from $1.18 to $1.47. That would represent a 32% and a 25% increase on both properties, property tax valuation only. That's not including the sales tax that would be generated, which is really where we make our money. So what does that look like in reality? What are we talking about here? Everybody has a perception that there's a parking issue downtown. So I was curious. I drew a 300-foot circle from the middle of Walmart, took an average trip. Not all the time are you going to go back to electronics, not all the time are you going to go back to, you know, just get flowers. Average trip. 300 feet, how often do you get to park right here? Probability, pretty low. Probability of parking 400 feet away? Yeah, probably pretty average. Probability of having to park all the way out here? Pretty low, very minimal. So let's take those same circles and draw them downtown. Folks are more than willing to walk 300 feet, and that is for optimum parking at Walmart. Folks are very readily not opposed to walking 400 feet, and we're going to this business right here, I don't know what it is, but it's right in the middle of the block, right in the middle of downtown, 400 feet, and you can see, you can park all the way down here, and still walk the same amount of distance that they're more than willing to, for the perceived convenience. 500 feet away covers 2/3 of Main Street. So rather than maybe spending a whole bunch of money on parking, we could do a public perception campaign and start revitalizing. That's not including looking maybe at the possibility of diagonal parking down the middle of Main Street. Let's slow the traffic down. Let's keep people moving, but how many lanes of traffic do you have to cross to go from corner to corner? If you were to cross Main Street on Broadway, how many lanes of traffic do you have to go across? Five lanes. You've got parking, parking, then, actually, it's, yeah, six.
Seven if you count parking.
Seven if you count parking. That's a long way to go. So it's, it can be daunting. Again, parking hurts our revenue, it's mathematical, it's not economical. Let's fix it. And with that, that is my presentation. What I would like to, so as I was going through this exercise, I have approached Planning Commission, they are fully on board, they have a recommendation to support moving in this direction. I would just like guidance from council, if you would like to move in this direction or continue the way we had been going.
Questions? Mike?
Any questions, yes.
Yes, I guess, Eric, did you run any numbers on, and I don't know if we even have the capability of knowing, like, sales tax per square foot of retail space we get?
Unfortunately.
Because I guess, and I guess I overall like the theory of not setting a minimum that you have to have. I like, I think the business is probably more than capable of deciding on their own how much parking they need for the type of business they want, and if they don't put enough parking in, it's at their own risk, not, I mean, it's really not our risk, because we're getting paid on square footage of building, not, square footage of parking lot doesn't pay much, square foot of building does.
Exactly.
Property tax, basically. So I guess, so what's in the 16 pages that you have?
So, this is an amalgamation of several, several different cities and towns that have moved to this type of regulation. Branson, Missouri, Fort Collins, Colorado, Bozeman, Montana, Casper, Wyoming, to some degree. And there's varying degrees of recommendations. Once we finalize these numbers, and what is included in this, so I'll back up and visit a little bit about, parking is a self-regulating issue, it's exactly what you said. Businesses know how much they need. We're not saying that they can't put in what they need. We're just saying we would like to have a maximum. If you need to exceed that maximum, then we would like to have a study done to show us, or have some sort of backup data that says, we're pretty sure we're going to need, you know, more than what your minimum, or your maximum is. But conversely, we're then also going to require a certain percentage additional landscaping. So if you want more parking, we will ask, under the proposed, with the way we have it written right now, we would ask for additional beautification. And again, it's in, in the vein of, does government really need to regulate something that really doesn't have anything to do with the health, safety, welfare of the citizens? In my mind, no. Well, it's, let's start making more walkable communities, let's start making more bicycle friendly communities. And that's really the goal of these guidelines, as they stand today. Obviously, those would go through the Planning Commission first, and then...
So basically, following, you're saying, and I'm just pulling numbers out of the sky, right now, for Walmart parking lot, we're saying you need five acres of parking, and you're saying we're going to choke that down to saying you need three acres max, based on, on the same calculation. You've got to prove to us why you should have four or five.
Exactly.
Okay.
And really...
Lowering that number.
Under the proposed guidelines, it would be more of a, so they've got five acres now, it would probably be about 4.25. It's not...
Right.
Unsimilar, it's, but that would be a maximum. They could do less if they so chose.
Okay.
Any business, or any, any place could.
Right.
They just couldn't run it up past the max without some...
Theory being, the more buildings we have per square foot of Riverton, the more tax dollars we're going to get.
Precisely.
And that's more sales tax numbers, too. We don't know what that number is.
Exactly. So to get back to your question about the sales tax per square foot, I don't have that normalized data. When I contacted the Department of Revenue, one, they don't collect that data, and two, even if they did, it would be confidential. And so I, we wouldn't be able to get a hold of it regardless, so. Yes?
How much, I know we've got plans over with the property out north of Walmart. I mean, how are they feeling about this Steve Wilson and everything? Is this something that they're...
Again, it's not...
Has it been...
So to answer that directly, they have not been approached because it's not been part of, it's in progress.
Has it been something they've complained about at all?
No.
And when they've been talking about their plans, wanting to have less or more parking or anything?
It's so nebulous at this point, really, nothing has been said in stones. And so really, this is the perfect time...
Right.
...to get something like this in place, so that they can adequately prepare for it, you know, with appropriate lot sizes, based on their customer needs.
That's kind of what I was thinking, I mean, that's our next kind of development area.
Correct.
Could come in handy. And it also gives us more freedom with things that people can do with the Safeway building, with the Kmart building.
Yes.
I mean...
The John Deere building.
Correct.
That's a perfect example.
Right.
Because they have literally zero parking and all that space. And so their tech, if someone were to develop or change or alter that building to suit their needs, they would then be required to provide X acres, quite frankly, based on the size of that building, parking. Well, if, if an extruder grows in there, I mean, not to, you know, maybe they want to have competition with somebody else, if someone were to do it with five employees, why would we require X acres of parking? They don't need it.
And I guess the other thing, too, is, I mean, when it comes right down to it, retail is changing. I mean, the internet and everything, amazon.com, all of that has been changing what retail is. And so I was thinking, you know, when you were talking about this, I was like, well, what about Black Friday at Walmart? You know, what are we going to do? What's going to happen then? But I imagine their numbers are drastically down at retail stores around the nation, I think that was observed.
We'll go back to, well, maybe we'll go back to, in response to that, so there's been some studies done on, specifically on Black Friday. And because design standards resided so far to the right...
Right.
It, it, Black Friday is not an F5. Black Friday's more like a F2 or an F3. They designed for an F5. To, so no matter what happened, literally, you could have people standing shoulder to shoulder in the mall, and we've got a spot for every person if they drove their own car.
And that makes sense, and that's what I was curious about.
So on, on Black Friday, and if you're curious, I can show you some of the, some of the articles that I'd given, Planning Commission specifically on Black Friday, and they... So to answer that directly, they have not been approached because it's not been part of, it's in progress.
Has it been something they've complained about at all?
No.
Even when they've been talking about their plans wanting to have less or more parking or anything?
It's so nebulous at this point. Really, nothing has been set in stones. And so really, this is the perfect time.
Right.
To get something like this in place so that they can adequately prepare for it, you know, with appropriate lot sizes based on their customer needs.
That's kind of what I was thinking. I mean, that's our next kind of development area.
Correct.
Could come in handy. And it also gives us more freedom with things that people can do with the Safeway building, with the Kmart building.
Yes.
I mean.
The John Deere building.
Correct.
That's a perfect example.
Right.
Because they have literally zero parking and all that space. And so their tech, if someone were to develop or change or alter that building to suit their needs, they would then be required to provide X acres, quite frankly, based on the size of that building, parking. Well, if, if an extruder grows in there, I mean, not to, you know, maybe they want to have competition with somebody else. If someone were to do it with five employees, why would we require X acres of parking? They don't need it.
And I guess the other thing too is, I mean, when it comes right down to it, retail is changing. I mean, the internet and everything, amazon.com, all of that has been changing what retail is. And so I'm, I was thinking, you know, when you were talking about this, I was like, well, what about Black Friday at Walmart? You know, what are we going to do? What's going to happen then? But I imagine their numbers are drastically down at, at retail stores around the nation. I think that was observed.
We'll go back to, well, maybe we'll go back to, in response to that. So there's been some studies done on specifically on Black Friday. And because design standards resided so far to the right.
Right.
It's, it, Black Friday is not an F5. Black Friday is more like a F2 or an F3. They designed for an F5. To, so no matter what happened, literally, you could have people standing shoulder to shoulder in the mall, and we've got a spot for every person if they drove their own car.
And that makes sense. And that's what I was curious about.
So on, on Black Friday, and if you're curious, I can show you some of the, some of the articles that I'd given Planning Commission specifically on Black Friday. And the guy that goes out and takes pictures in empty parking lots on Black Friday.
But I guess the other point is, is what Mike is making, which is, if you want to prepare for that as a business owner, then you do that. Don't, don't have us sit here and, and, and have, have a code that's going to make you prepare for the most insane Black Friday that's ever hit Riverton in one store, even though we've got plenty of other stores that would be doing it. So, thank you.
Here's another good example, and this might clarify that a bit or put it into perspective. Let's look at Main Street and talk about a current use on Main Street. And I'm not sure where the movie theater's at. We've got a couple, but I think it's in here somewhere.
Yep, right there.
If that burned down tomorrow, and they wanted to rebuild in their same location under our current parking maximum, because we have a theater maximum and it's one and a half, and I'm making up numbers, but it's one and a half parking spaces per seat in the theater. They would have to own the entire downtown parking lot to rebuild. Is that, we love our downtown, and yet our regulations dictate we will never see development like that again, ever. Ever, ever, ever.
Ever.
Ever. It, it would go, it would go against code and, and, and again, obviously, we need to be realistic. We can't have that type of development everywhere. I mean, it's, they're sharing walls. It's, it's very tight. But we used to build our towns correctly. Tight downtown structure, we thought vertically. Let's increase our height instead of our breadth. And what that did was allowed that price per square foot to skyrocket without any additional footprint. But we haven't been building vertically, especially west of the Mississippi. We could, why? We've got the land. But we're having trouble paying for all of the infrastructure to get to it. And that's really what it boils down to. How do we spend, or how do we make enough money to just provide the water, sewer, and streets to our existing corporate boundaries? That's not talking about expansion, which obviously, as hopefully Riverton grows, will happen. But let's grow in a, in a logical fashion, something that makes fiscal and fiduciary sense.
And I guess really it's discouraging small business if you want to get too technical. If you want to get technical, if you were wanting to have a small business as a theater, and, and like you said, if it burned down, you're having to buy so much more property and develop it and change it from what the existing use is just for parking lot.
I'll, I'll give you a perfect example. There was a photo shop that wanted to come into one of the stores downtown. They couldn't do it because they were required to have so many off-street parking spaces. Their foot traffic was going to be almost zero because they were going out and taking photos and then bringing them back, processing them. But they couldn't open up shop because they couldn't afford the rent on the parking spaces they were required to have. Two builders on the Planning Commission have seen projects die because they could afford the building. They just wanted to get going, just start up. And they couldn't do it because they couldn't afford the additional land required to accommodate parking. That's a failure.
Well, and even with the ironworks thing where they were feeling like they had to go buy new property just to be able to, to provide for an expansion, which is an investment in the community and adding square footage of storefront as well.
Again, it's, it's in my mind, a self-regulating issue. If they don't have enough to accommodate their customers, they will find someone or someplace that will accommodate it, and someone else can move in with an appropriate use. And we're not expanding into new territory and expanding our infrastructure. We're utilizing the space that we have. But it's a self-regulating issue.
Lance?
Eric, is there, in the examples that you gave of some other municipalities, is there an example of some basement measure, like a minimum measure? I mean, I know, I hear what you're saying in that focus more on the maximum. But is there a point where those entities have stepped in to say, well, yeah, but, I mean, as much as we would leave it to the business to make those decisions and what would be good for business, that there's still some safety mechanism to go, well, at some point, there is a finite amount of space in which you will impact the minimum needs of parking?
Yeah, if I understand you correctly, we don't want a restaurant with 600 tables and eight parking spaces.
Right.
Correct.
Right, exactly. Like, we got to, yeah, they may regulate to some extent, but then again, they might just say, it's not, we don't have to do it, therefore, we're going to build and good luck with trying to find a parking space.
The safeguard is about a sentence long, and it says, "All items not addressed or approved through permit shall be reviewed by the Community Development Department and Planning Commission." So it, when they come in to do a permit and say, here's our site plan, and the group takes a look at it and says, you have 600 tables and five parking places. That's not going to work. How are you going to accommodate that? It still needs to be approved prior to going to Planning Commission and then permitting. So, yeah.
It's almost like that probability curve. Instead of being out on the F5 realm, they're so F1-ish that it's minus F1. Like, they haven't, they have no concept of something has to be given.
Correct.
In that area, yeah. Is the, is there examples in, in those other municipalities of like changes in economic development, practical? I mean, I guess it kind of goes to the property tax or sales tax, which you can't figure, but there's some of those municipalities have been doing this for quite some time.
I had, so other than anecdotal.
I'm fine with anecdotal.
They have said, yes, we have seen an increase in our revenue. Moreover, it's reports from the community that say, wow, this place is really nice. And when I say place, you know, the, the one example that I gave with the hotels, the restaurants, and people like to spend time there. And it's really nice. We like this development. People like people. And so when we're, when we're talking about placemaking and generating a, a much more livable community, that definitely factors into it. If people like to be there and go there, more people will go there.
I, I think you're, the comment on placemaking is exactly, I mean, this is really the theme of that placemaking session that we attended, that it's kind of build a good place and people will come. If you don't build a place that's welcoming, they won't go. So it's, this is one of the main areas where it, it's put into example.
Yeah.
So I have a question, I guess.
Okay.
How do we deal with, so this is all about commercial zoning?
Correct.
Okay, so this isn't residential, okay, but what about the, what about the edge? Okay, where commercial turns into residential? So if anybody's familiar with the University of Wyoming, the city has to issue parking permits to the people who actually live in houses within about six or eight blocks of campus. Because people will park everywhere, and the people who live in the houses can't even get in and out of their driveways if they don't do something to limit parking, you know, in, in those residential areas. So you see, so I'm, you know, we, we talked about, we talked about this at Planning Commission where, you know, somebody wanted to turn a house into a chiropractic center. And you could say, well, that's probably not terribly busy where the guy's located right now, which has been a doctor's office for a long time, okay? Probably not very busy, one or two customers at a time. And so there's plenty of parking to make that work, okay? But if you zone it commercial office, there's a number of things that it could be, okay? And that might cause quite a little bit of concern. And, and what, what we heard from the, the builder there was that, was that, that the dentist's office didn't have enough parking and community, child development services didn't have enough parking. And although you can see, drive by and look, there's a lot of parking places around the buildings, could very well be that every one of those places gets filled up with employees during the daytime. And so during the day, you wind up with a, with, you know, a real parking pressure. So, so it seems to me like we've got a, there, there's a, you know, even Ironworks and Parrot's, you know, if Ironworks was busy enough, or Parrot's was busy enough, okay? That they were taking parking places from the other business, you know? Good heavens, I've got, you know, we've had in the past where, where businesses on Main Street were complaining that the people who lived in the apartments above those businesses were parking their cars on Main Street and keeping customers away from the front of the door. How do, how do you see, so in my mind, there are some times when you need to say, well, you kind of need something.
Correct. I will respond to a couple of different points there. So I did live on Main Street when I first got here, and very rarely did, did parking become an issue. We lived in a little apartment on the second story for a couple of years before we purchased our house. And it was, again, it became an anecdotal type thing. And, and yes, maybe somebody parked directly in front of the door, but again, there are plenty of spots within a very reasonable distance of the front door of the business. But again, it boils down to that, that designing for the absolute worst-case scenario. And on the fringes, yes, you will have impact, but it hasn't been a negative impact. Now, Laramie is a very unique example because their population has increased at the college, so at a, a good degree. And yet their footprint has not kept up with the demand of the college students. So that's a, that's a very unique situation. Because yes, it, I, I would totally agree. That is, having been to the University of Wyoming, that it's an issue. And again, as public right-of-way, anyone is entitled to park wherever they want, other than in front of a driveway or, you know, obviously if it's, if it's colored appropriately. So yes, there is there impact on the fringe, absolutely. But when we look at it from a 60,000-foot view to say, or even, no pun intended, a 5,000-foot view, when we can count the cars, we can see that, that the impact is likely negligible.
I, I guess, to me, I think, I think there's a place for a reasonable, you know, a low minimum maybe, you know? Like you were saying, if you've got a chiropractor office, maybe they need to have four parking spaces of their, you know, off-street and not just be able to use on-street. That's the problem I see on Main Street is that everybody just uses the public parking and they don't, any of them have any parking of their own. And so, yeah, parking's a big deal, but not a big enough deal for them to buy the building next door and tear it down, but parking in. You know, so I mean, there's that. But I, but I think in general, business will regulate itself because the 600-seat restaurant that only has five parking spaces will not be there very long because people won't go there because there's no parking. You know, I mean, so it's a self-fulfilling.
Correct.
Issue. And so, yeah, I think there's a room for us, a, a minimum so that we don't get this, yeah, they're parking in every residential lot for the next two blocks because they got to walk down to this place. But again, that business eventually is going to suffer if they don't have reasonable amount of parking.
And I will fully admit, I, I focused on commercial and industrial development here. Residential is a, an issue in and of itself because you want the, the aesthetic value at that point and the walkableness and the, to be able to bicycle down the streets. And so, yes, you could fill up the, the right-of-way with parking on, on-street parking, which, which frankly, we're providing now with our, our minimum street widths. But we do require two off-street parking spots per res, per dwelling unit. And that likely wouldn't change. We don't want to change the character of our neighborhoods. We just want to provide the ability for commercial and industrial to really develop. I mean, to be frank, that's who pays the bills.
Just a, just a comment that, you know, I know I have had some constituents complain about, you just mentioned the number of in-residential, that there's even been comments about or questions about, can we create a maximum number of occupants with their vehicles in residential areas? Because there are some homes that have so many people living in the home, then every single one of them has a vehicle, and they're all parking on the right-of-way in front of other people's homes that they can't use their two because of so many vehicles parked. So, and it's a tangent, but it just, there's, there is that additional impact just in straight residential. Then when you get the zone of butting right up against a commercial, and now the commercial is parking in the residential, you're going to have, you're going to have issues.
But for the most part, they're parking on public parking.
Yeah, it's all public right-of-way.
People think the parking spots in front of their house are theirs, but they're public parking.
Right.
Yeah, it's, so that's the challenge.
But when it's, when there's, when there's eight people in a home that all have vehicles, and they're using every, all eight spaces on the city right-of-way, then the other people who live in their homes have no access to their public right-of-way. It's like, whose public right-of-way is more, more accessible than another person's public right-of-way? It's like first come, first served, or I don't know.
Single-family homes with about four families in them.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, we do have occupancy.
There was one time at my house that I had five teenagers at one time. We had at least four or five cars, but I've got enough room to park and not be on the public right-of-way.
Right.
So I mean, that's the, that's the challenge.
You've got a nice big driveway there.
Yeah. Sometimes they walk me in, but other than that, I'm. So this 16 pages here is going to be, get kind of whittled down a little bit, guidelines, or is this?
I would say massaged for sure, so that it's becoming more and more appropriate for our community. And then with the blessing of the, the Planning Commission, it will go through them to, for full approval of the.
Guidelines.
The change, of the guidelines, yes.
Okay, then City Council's going to see this?
I would expect the, when is our next? Planning Commission, this 19th. And then it would be the following. So that, actually, we're not having a meeting on the 4th for council, so it would be the 10th.
10th of July?
July. Likely be when you guys will see it.
Yeah, I certainly don't see any reason why we shouldn't allow businesses with huge parking lots that they can't even fill halfway. Use some of that for businesses that would attract more people to come to, so that you can, you know, you could, what I see in, in a lot of malls is that, is out against the street, you have a whole bunch of little stores, you know? And so it's almost like there's another series of malls there, and they're all sharing that same parking lot. And so it kind of changes, kind of changes, so instead of having these huge, open parking areas like, you know, Kmart built. instead of having these huge, open parking areas, like, you know, Kmart building, you know, nothing going on in it, except campers.
Yeah, hypothetically, you could take that Kmart, and put a couple of businesses up against the street, and a couple on the sides, and you could have twice as much square foot in that lot that you do now.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, it, it, again, generates a lot more tax revenue, and a lot more sales tax revenue, and-
Yeah.
Just examples-
This is for upkeep?
Right here.
Yeah, but a much more vibrant business community, and a much more vibrant community, so-
Right, right.
And walkable space.
Yeah.
Who could literally park at Kmart, go have a can, a cup of coffee, maybe grab a bagel at the shop, and a pretzel, have a taco for lunch.
And go to the gym.
And go to the gym.
Go to the gym.
Who knows?
Go to the gym and work it off, huh? Okay, that's, that's pretty good.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
We like ideas like this, things to, things to bring businesses here, I think this is good, good effort made into this, good ideas, I like it a lot.
Yes.
Developing a property a lot more cost-effective, and-
Thank you.
The math was a little much, but-
When was that picture taken there, Eric?
This was on a Saturday at, I wanna say-
Ten o'clock?
...o'clock.
About 10 o'clock in the morning, what, what, what time of year?
It was July, I believe it was July 28th, it was either the 28th or the 25th, I have a lot of photos running-
Like that field's been mowed.
Yeah, so you can, see, you can, you can see that the alfalfa field behind Walmart there is in Windrose.
Yes.
Yeah. First or second cut, so.
Again, it was-
I believe it was a second.
Very, very little volume.
Probably second.
And I fully understand with the, you know, with the, I mean, not to belabor the conversation too much, but with the closing of, of Safeway, that has put additional pressure on-
Walmart and Smalls.
...our only other grocery stores, but you can still go out at peak time, 'cause I keep my eye on this kinda thing, and you can always find a spa, a parking space, and in fact, you can find surplus parking spaces. It might not be in the golden zone, but it's definitely not too far away.
It's amazing how the perception of, that that's farther than walking, or, the perception is walking a block on Main Street's farther than that, but that yellow zone's probably about the same distance as walking a block on-
So, now, are those circles, are those circles?
Yes.
Because from our perspective, it looks like an oval.
My apologies, the aspect angle of the viewer creates an oval.
Yes.
So there, the picture is, is scaled with the circles, so, this is still 800 feet from here to here.
Okay.
And in this one, again, they're oval, but they are technically circles, my apologies.
Okay, all right, okay. Anything else, guys?
Thank you.
The Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn the work, work session?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded? Hold on, favor say aye?
Aye.
And we're done at, at 7:50.